Before we start the meeting tonight, we're going to have a pledge. The pledge is going to be led by Councilwoman Stevens tonight. And we're going to have an invocation, and that's going to be given by Reverend Eric Hopkins. Ms. Debbie Montgomery had some surgery, and I ask you to include her in her prayer. She won't be here this evening, but we miss her. And with that, I would like for us to stand. Nancy?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need standing, please?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather together in this meeting room tonight for the betterment of Connersville, Indiana. Help those that are here that are in positions to enhance their vision beyond the now, that they may see things as you see, in the good, in the black and not the red. Father, we thank you for Debbie Montgomery, as she is serving, but yet in under surgery. God, we just thank you for the healing, the healing touch upon her. We thank you for employment that you're sending our way. Give us favor in everything that we do. Let us show the true colors of Connersville as they come to inspect us. Father, thank you for the unity tonight and the things that will be accomplished in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Go to the main to order. First order of business will be real call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Schomel?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery? Council McCreech? Councilwoman Stevens?
Present.
Let the record show that five council people are here tonight. We have a forum, and we can do business. The first order of business tonight will be the reading of the minutes of the last meeting of April 7th.
I move to let us be approved on the April 7th regular meeting.
Motion in a second that we approve the minutes of the April 7th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? All appearing, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Ask that everybody turn their cell phone rares, maybe to the retirement position or the off position. It'd be great. And we'll right into our business. Resolution 2014-12. This is a request for a public hearing for a tax abatement. Pay of two. They propose to expand the property to the tune of $100,000. Excuse me, $1 million. I've got a couple zeros there. And I would not like to ask for your permission for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Do we know how many jobs this will create?
We will know when we get the whole story. They'll do, after we advertise for public hearing, they'll go through and score the thing. Did someone make a motion?
I did.
And is there a second? A motion in a second that we pass resolution 2014-12. Request for a public hearing for a primary tax abatement. Pay of two. Any discussion?
One. How long is the abatement for?
They haven't stated it yet. They're just asking for a public hearing. We'll work that all up, and we'll have that all at the next meeting. Any discussion out there? Anybody talk about the abatement? Not appearing, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next thing on the agenda would be resolution 2014-13. This is reimbursement in the police department, $100 coming into telephone. That shouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept resolution 2014-13.
Got a motion in a second to accept the $100 back into the police telephone. Any discussion? Not appearing, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2014-14. Borrowing money from the Cume Camp Fund, $75,000 into the park fund. I think you know, if you read your things, what we're doing there, we're borrowing money on the Cume Camp Fund to fund the park till we get to June. We don't have to pay that back by the end of the year, but we kind of got a plan what we're going to do. What's your pleasure?
I move ahead. Resolution 2014-14.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Got a motion in a second to pass resolution 2014-14, borrowing $75,000 from Cume Camp Fund into the park to fund us to the tax draw. Is, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Right now, it looks like that's a pretty substantial sum of money, and I kind of feel like we're taking like a payday loan almost.
That's just about what it is.
Yeah.
Well, exactly.
And that really doesn't work out too well.
We don't pay interest.
I mean, I understand we don't pay interest and things, but it feels like it's a short-term fix, and we're not fixing the problem. So I think we really need to take steps.
We are fixing the problem.
Yeah, but you even said it's a short-term fix.
No, no, I'm saying.
We need to make a longer-term fix.
The whole things that we're doing, they're beginning to show, but they haven't shown enough. But by June, they'll show enough, and hopefully we'll be able to pay this back. And this isn't a non-common thing from a city to borrow from itself.
Well, I understand that, but we can't go on hopefully when you're taking a loan. I mean, when you take a loan.
What do you suggest we do there?
I can't see taking a $5,000 loan. I mean, I don't care if it's from ourselves or who it's from. I mean, I don't know what to do, but I don't know. I do know that if we take more money, I think that we're just prolonging the inevitable.
The problem with, for the park is, you would have to lay off almost everybody in the park because they have so few employees there.
I spoke with Mike Pryor, and he said this is a common thing, that this happens. I understand that. And in the past, if I understand this right, it's been taken from the general fund, correct?
We have, not in the last few years, in the past, we have taken money like out of our local option income tax and given the park one time, like $100,000. We didn't borrow it. We just gave it to them out of the general fund.
Before this is over, we'll have to ask for additional appropriation. Excuse me, we'll have to ask for a advanced draw from the county.
I've already requested that.
Before we're through this. These are just things we have to do to get to the next tax draw. But what we put in place, by the end of the year, show that we're able to pay all our bills and pay our money back.
The things that we put in place in the park, it will take almost the whole year for us to get to that point, yeah.
And if we had any other option, you know, close the park system completely?
Then we can't run the fund. We can't run the fund in the red, and that's what's going to happen after this.
I understand that. And I understand that closing the park system's not a good plan, but if we don't have the money, I mean, we just don't have the money. I'm not saying that that's something I want to do, but I'm also saying we're here to make tough choices.
Exactly what does funding of the park mean?
Paying the employees up there, basically, and all the other expenses. There'll be a lot of money that'll come in when we open the pool, start paying that. Of course, we'll be spending money. All of the summer programs actually take in a little money. I don't want anybody to get to the point to say that they make money, that they take money in, which will help the park get along. But for right now, we need this $75,000 to keep them in, working, keep the park going, keep the rest cut, you know. I forget. Mike, come in here, will you, please?
Well, you've got to remember that the park buildings all get rented, once as much in the summer. I mean, all the shelters, everything's rented a whole lot more in the summer. Their revenue picks up.
How many acres you cut?
About 175 or so.
A week? Anyway, is there any other question on this issue?
So, does it come out like salaries? I mean, is it just?
It's everything.
It's for their budget.
To cover the needs of their budget.
To get us through till the tax.
So, just salaries?
Well, that's not the only thing. All their salaries and benefits, everything to keep the buildings going.
But it comes out of the park.
The park budget.
You pay each one.
The park fund covers the park budget.
So, why don't we take it from the general fund as they've done in the past?
There's not enough money in the general fund to be taking that.
I don't think so. $350,000 is spent every time we pay.
I understand that.
If we take it out of general fund, I'm afraid it's just going to cut the general fund down that much more.
And at that point, it spreads the cost over everybody instead of just the park. And that's, that would be my suggestion.
Well, then I'm afraid we're going to have to do the same thing to cover the expenses for the general fund if we take money out to cover for the park. The things that we put in place to help alleviate the problem, it's going to take more than six weeks to get us to that point. It's not a quick fix.
We think by the end of the year, we won't be flushed in money where we can change our ways, but we'll have all our bills paid and pay everything back. Trust us, we've looked at it, we look at it daily. And this is our best option.
And I'm not sure, I don't really think we're going to need this whole $75,000. We maybe could have got by with about 30, but I didn't want to ask for 30 and then come back and do another 30 if we got into a pinch. I'd rather do this and then just give it all back in June.
Any other questions?
So what we're doing now is, we shouldn't have to do this next year.
I won't say that. I wish I could say that, but I can't say that.
So, if that's the case, then we need to adjust the budget. That's what I'm saying.
It's like, it's like I've been telling you, it's like a crystal ball. We don't know how much money we're going to get. If we knew the exact number we were going to get, we'd be in good shape. But we just don't know that.
Well, in town, we took a little.
So, if that's the case, then we need to make sure our income estimates are far lower than what we expect to get, and then our expenses are lower because we adjusted our income.
And that's what we've done. By doing the things that we've done, and taken all the clothing allowance away from everybody, by taking overtime completely out, watching our spending, and brand, when we pay the bills today.
Yeah, I might mention that in the last two weeks, we spent $61,259.58 on claims, and the two weeks prior to that, $124,093.43.
It's beginning to show.
That's not just general fund, that's claims. Claims for the general fund.
You're talking about insurance claims?
Or all claims.
All bills.
We take all the bills, claims, where we pay.
I just want to be clear.
We paid 187 bills in the last two weeks, and the two weeks prior to that, 163.
And that's not including salaries, correct?
No.
That's not payroll.
So you can see it's working. It is working, but it's going to take some time to see when we get there. And if you give us two or three months here until we can kind of get a hold of this thing.
Well, I don't think we can tell the kids we're not going to open the pool.
No, we can't do that.
We can't do that. I mean, you can't open a park, you can't have a basketball court. I mean, you just can't do it.
Okay, any further questions? Anybody out there have a question? Come to the podium if you're comfortable.
Last meeting, I think Julie, did you say that you applied for early draw for April and May?
Yeah, we haven't gotten.
You haven't heard anything for April yet?
It was, it's about this time of year for this time of the month, unless you're, sometimes it takes them a little bit. And I'm not sure.
A little bit early.
There's not going to be much money there right now.
Right, I knew there wouldn't be, but I didn't know if you heard anything else.
No, we haven't given us anything yet.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead and answer.
Mike, how many employees do you have?
I didn't realize this was going to happen, but I would have more numbers and stuff. Oh, we have four, union full-time, one part-timer, and myself, Darrell, and Sharon. And we have another worker that's about, well, five to 15 hours a week to cover the night events.
And what are their duties? For example, their duties, what do they do, different ones? You have some in the building, I'm sure.
Well, Sharon is the park secretary. She answers the phones and reserves the buildings and shelters. Darrell does all the recreation stuff, soccer sign-ups, T-ball, softball, men's league.
All sports.
Tons of stuff. And then the four workers takes care of the park.
It's not just that park, it's all the parks.
Yes, seven different parks in town. I mean, we spent the last month down at Babe Ruth, so.
I have to tell you also, I was at the park trying to book a building or something, and the next 13 weeks are booked both buildings.
Booked?
Yeah.
Cool.
Weekends, it's booked. You can't get in there, it's that busy. Any other questions?
Yeah, I move to amend that we strike out, that we take the money from the Cume Camp Fund, and that we take it from the general fund, so that if we have to take, if we are short, then it's felt across the entire city and not just, just one department.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor that we'll have to consider first.
No, that's amendment to the main motion.
Okay, okay. You want to make an amendment, is there a second to the amendment?
Would you explain that a little bit clearer?
I'm not sure what you said, Gabe.
I move to amend the resolution so that we strike out the word Cume Camp Fund, Cume Capital Development Fund, and insert the word general fund.
You want to borrow it from the general fund instead of from Cume Camp?
So that if we're short, then it's felt against the entire city, and we're not taking, at that point, we have to make a cut, then it's across all departments, and it's not just one department.
Oh, if we're going to do that, there's, if this mail motion fails, it'll come from the general fund. And just make the general fund go short, because that's where it's going to have to come from.
I'll second your motion.
And we have a motion to amend the motion that says we strike the word Cume Camp Fund and take it from the general fund on the amendment. Any questions?
Julie, do you think that's what we ought to do?
No.
What is this fund used for? There's a Cume Cap Improvement Fund and Development Fund.
That's if we wanted to build a new building.
It's for projects, cumulative capital development.
Okay, is that anything?
Yeah.
How much is in there? I didn't look, I'm sorry.
There is $283,528 in there.
Which, if we take the money from, if we're short in the general fund later, we could take from there. But then, at that point, then it's affecting the entire city, if I'm not mistaken, instead of just one department. As right now, this would just affect one department.
I guess I'm not clear about when you're saying one department.
Well, right now, the $75,000 is for the park fund, the park fund only.
Correct.
If the general fund runs short, then it's not for just the park, it's for all government, or all local cities.
Then it won't affect the park department at all, though, because the park fund doesn't come out of the general fund.
See, we're just.
We're kind of robbing from Peter to pay Paul, any way you look at it.
Yeah.
Whether we take it from Cume Cap or whether we take it from the general fund. I mean, we can do it that way, if that makes everybody feel better, it just is going to run the general fund closer to, we're down to $608,000 in the general fund.
How many, 30? But you draw 300 a month?
Pardon me now?
We pull 300 a month from the.
350 every payroll. There are two payrolls a month, some months there are three.
We have one payroll yet for this month.
And we pull $300,000 per pay.
350.
Or per month.
It's, no, that's per pay.
Per pay.
And each pays different, first pay of the, different things come out. We pay most of the fringe benefits, like the health insurance and stuff come out the first pay of the month. So we've already paid, so this pay, and I can't tell you for sure.
So, why are, why are we having to do this for the park and not any other department?
The park's already low. Their fund is in the red right now.
They have a small budget.
And their budgets, I mean, we don't keep in excess of money in the park fund.
The general fund, you keep any money that you have extra, you keep in the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, on the amendment, and the amendment is to take out Cume Cap and replace it with the general fund, on the amendment only, we'll have a real call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
No.
Councilman Schomel?
No.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
No.
Two yeses and three noes.
Okay, the motion doesn't carry. Let's go back to the original, then, resolution 2014-14, borrowing $75,000 from the Cume Camp Fund to put into the park fund. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, we're actually not borrowing the entire $75,000, we're borrowing what we need.
We will borrow $75,000 in June, when we get our tax draw, we'll put it back.
We may not need it all.
Won't make any difference, you know.
Right, got you.
It's in this part, this part.
Yeah, it's our money, I mean, it's not like you could go to the bank and pay interest.
Okay.
But legally has to be back by the end of the year.
By the end of the year, legally, yes. We'll put it back by the end of June, when we get our tax draw.
Okay, is, any further discussion on the original motion?
We don't have a.
Yeah, we had a motion in a second.
No, we didn't. I'm sorry.
Well, for one second.
You're right.
I never.
I'll tell you that one time.
Man, I must have screwed up at Board of Works, I didn't even know if I was here.
Yes, you were.
Well, you don't have to.
Well, I just was here, and I was a witness to the.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. We'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
No.
Three to two.
Three to two, okay. You have passed that resolution, thank you. Pending ordinance 3112, this is an amending ordinance 6022, governing the class trash collection. And if you remember, last, the Board of Works gave permission to a person that owned eight apartments because we read the original ordinance to read eight or less. We could give them trash service. When we actually began to look at it, it was eight or less, which meant if you had eight, you couldn't do it, you had to have seven or less. So John has done some cleanup here, and we've put in here that the Board of Works has the authority to change that for good reason. And some of the good reasons might be, a company might have six apartments over here and six apartments here, and be on the same piece of land, and makes them eligible, and it helps us make money. Where in the original ordinance, if those six and six were on the same piece of property, we couldn't do their trash for them because it's 12 apartments, so they could come here to the Board of Works and ask for change, and we could offer it to them, and we could collect the trash for all 12, even if it's six and six, if the Board of Works approved it. Kind of like we do getting water outside of the city and some of the other things. Board of Works has authority to do that, rather than written stone, because in these days, if you can pick up six cans for 60 bucks a month, boom, 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 that's a pretty good deal. However, we got to pay to dump the trash, but it still makes a little money, or doesn't make money. I always make that mistake, it takes in money, which helps us. So, he's made this amendment, so that pending ordinance 3112 is a amending that ordinance, giving the Board of Works the authority to look at that, each individual case individually.
So, just so I'm clear on this, John, on where it says section C here, is it the last sentence where it says the Board of Public Works and Safety shall have the option to allow variance for this equipment for good cause? Is that essentially the?
That is the amendment. Yeah, it's the Board of Public Works and Safety here shall have the option to allow a variance from this requirement for good cause. And that's the eight unit rental having to have a trash common price receptive.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept pending ordinance 3112.
Got a motion in a second to consider pending ordinance 3112 on first reading. As I described it, it would allow the Board of Works to have some leeway in deciding who gets the trash pickup. Discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Some.
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3112 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, you can consider it on third if you want.
Some of.
We got a motion to consider pending ordinance 3112 on third and final reading. This is an amendment to the trash ordinance, allowing the Board of Works to have discretion in considering who can get trash ordinance or trash pickup beyond eight apartments. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried on third, and that's done. Pending ordinance 3113, this is the authority of the Board of Works and Public Safety to appoint and remove the superintendent of utilities. And let me tell you where this comes from. When the utility board was dissolved, one of the fears, the utility board and the people that didn't want it dissolved was that the superintendent and the other positions, the assistant superintendent, would become a political appointment of the mayor and work at the will and closure of the late mayor, which actually, that's kind of what happens. We find that it's almost impossible to get someone to come out of the union to be the superintendent of utilities. It's impossible to go out of town and get a superintendent that is qualified and has all the qualifications, because nobody's going to take that job for one, two, three, or four years, knowing that in three or four years, the mayor can point his uncle to do it if he wants to. So, I went to the union representatives of the utility, and I told them what I had in mind. I talked with John, and John did some consulting, and he's crafted an ordinance that basically takes the superintendent of utilities out of politics. It will be hired, the mayor, the executive of the city will recommend to the Board of Works. The Board of Works actually does the hiring. With their approval, they're hired. The only way that the superintendent can be dismissed is for just cause, and the causes are listed in the ordinance. And then the final say-so falls back, even if the Board of Works said, yeah, we're going to dismiss this guy for conduct on becoming a utility superintendent, he wore a red shoe and a green shoe. Then it goes to the city council, and a majority of the vote has to uphold that. So we got two stopgaps on it to be sure that it's out of politics. That will give us the authority then to, someone will feel free to either leave the union and take one of those jobs, or to hire somebody outside that would take one of those jobs and come in here and be a professional superintendent of utilities. In the utility department, there are so many requirements that you got to have for water, for wastewater, and believe me, if you'd see the reports that come across my desk and talk to Mary Ellen down at the, it's every day, they put on a new something that we got to do. It's a professional job in itself. So, John and I, and I hope you think that this is as good as we can do to get it out of politics. Questions?
Yeah, I got some questions, I'll pull them today. It says utility service board on here several times. Is it okay that says that, or does it need to say?
That's according to the old ordinance.
Okay, so that's true.
And what he's doing is reiterating that all the power that was given, that utility service board has been transferred, it's already been done, it's already in the hands of the Board of Works.
Needs to be listed as.
Yeah, which we have to state it that way.
And then the other thing, thing, well, I had a question on, it says, talks about a hearing. Where is that hearing?
It's held in the Board of Works, just like every other hearing, at the police department, fire department. If the person that had that was accused of neglect of duty, then it would come to the Board of Works for a hearing. And if they said, yeah, and showed up for two weeks, then they could say, yeah, he's dismissed, but then it has to go to the city council for the final say so.
So the hearing would take place in the city council?
At Board of Works.
Board of Works.
Board of Works runs the city. City council has final say so on this. We thought it was a fair way to treat the person that is in charge of utilities.
It could stop at the Board of Works, but we thought the extra layer of the council actually was another guarantee to whoever would come in, that their job would be safe when politics changed.
And this is just consistent with the rest of them, right? Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending orders thirty-one thirteen.
Okay.
A motion to consider pending ordinance thirty-one thirteen on first reading. I just went over it with you. I don't want to have to do it again and bore everybody. And before we vote on it, any questions? Okay, well, real call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
We have adopted that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Some of them.
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one thirteen on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Not opposed, we can move forward. Would you like to consider pending ordinance thirty-one thirteen on third and final reading?
Some of them.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one thirteen on third and final reading. Any further discussion? We'll have a real call vote.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
We'll pass that on third and final reading. It becomes the city ordinance. Thank you so much. I think that'll make it a better way to work for our city. Pending ordinance thirty-one fourteen. This is additional appropriation in the redevelopment money for building supplies. As I told you two weeks ago, the money from the rent goes into the general fund and then we have to appropriate out to the redevelopment commission to pay the bills and that's what we're doing here and this is for building supplies. This money is coming in as income and it's going out as expense. Any questions?
Where are we at on selling that place?
I think it's a done deal. Do you know, Mr. Economic Development Director? On the Fifth Third Bank? I think it's a done deal. We've been over this and over this. John, you should know redevelopment, is it a done deal on selling the Fifth Third Bank?
We're now working on title insurance because we don't have a closing date set.
But it is close.
Yeah, and the buyer, potential buyer has directed us to proceed to obtain the title insurance, which is tantamount to a closing. You know, these things can always fall through, but it appears that extremely likely that it'll be sold to the gentleman and his wife that are buying the property and his LLC.
Okay, on pending ordinance.
Just five hundred dollars?
How much?
This two thousand five hundred dollars, is that for bills?
That's for bills. They've been doing some repairs over there.
Well, and it means general things like light bulbs and stuff and that's the redevelopment commission's responsibility to take care of those things right now.
They've done a really good job at managing that building. They've done it, don't you think, John?
Oh, yeah. Well, they've done a lot of repairs.
And I gotta commend John Pausi. He's got the earmuffs on there. John Pausi has acted as the manager on behalf of the redevelopment board at no pay whatsoever and he's done the management over there for the last two months.
Because we just took some money in last time, so we're just acting like they're checkbooks.
Well, we keep, the money goes into a separate fund. It's redevelopment commission has its own fund. When we started this, I had no idea how to appropriate money, what the utilities were gonna cost, what we were gonna need money for, so we've just kind of been appropriating as it comes up. Plus, I didn't know how long it was gonna go on.
Right.
So hoping by now we'd have it sold to the new person.
The nice thing about this, it's fine in itself, so far. I hope it doesn't get old with it. Okay, what do you want to do about pending ordinance?
I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one fourteen on first reading. Putting twenty-five hundred dollars to the redevelopment commission for building materials and supplies. On any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Some of them.
Second.
On suspension of rules only, considering pending ordinance number thirty-one fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We can move forward if you'd like.
Some of them.
Some of them.
Considering pending ordinance thirty-one fourteen on third and final reading, putting twenty-five hundred dollars into the redevelopment commission for building materials and supplies. We'll have a real call vote.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
You have passed that and that's a done deal, third reading. Pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen. This is an ordinance that would take, we need money in the cemetery to transfer into the cemetery fund from water, sewer, and building materials and.
To building materials and?
To building materials that. We're putting a fence on the north side that's falling down.
This doesn't.
No, no, this is stones. This is stones.
I don't actually know what this is. They did something. Some repairs over there, we had to, we didn't have any money in building materials.
This is actually coming out of the cemetery fund. We have a special fund, again, like the Park Fund, we have a special fund with cemetery. It's in the budget and it's budgeted and it can only be used in cemetery unless you pass an ordinance taking it out of there.
But we only appropriate like two line items, other contractual services and water and sewer, that's usually.
And that might be something we missed when we were talking to you on the Park Fund. It has its budget that, you know, it can be used only for the park. We would have to transfer it out by ordinance or in by ordinance and that's what we've done tonight and transferred it in by ordinance.
Will we pass pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen?
Got a motion in a second to pass pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen on first reading. Is there any further discussion?
It's for sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Yes.
That's a good bill.
They can do a lot with that, I'll bet.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen on third and final reading?
Some of them.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to consent pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen on third and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, we got to the business pretty good. Okay, I'm sorry. Would you like to consider pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen on third and final reading?
Some of them.
We now have a motion in a second on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty-one fifteen on third and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Got the same. Economic, or EDG Director, this is the EDG Director's first report to the city council. I'd like to introduce him to you, Mr. Dan Parker.
Yes. Nice to work.
How long have you been there now, Dan?
I'm starting my sixth week.
Nice to meet you. I've worked with Dan now for the last six years.
Thank you, sir.
And I can tell you, it's been a pleasure to work with him. He has one thing in mind.
Not spilling your water.
And that's to make Connorsville better and to do great jobs.
Did we turn the Alaska air off?
I'll take two. I'll take them both. Thank you very much.
Mike, turn the temperature up.
Are you working with me?
What's up?
I'm ready.
Maybe we could say.
Like a polar vortex movement.
My turn?
Your turn. You're all.
Well, the last time that I was before this council, I was, I think it was the twenty, or no, it was the first of October two thousand twelve, I was asked to come here and do what Eric did tonight and that was to pray at the beginning of your meeting. And if you'll recall that meeting, I do, with some clarity, that I asked God to open the windows of heaven and bless Connorsville with blessings of prosperity. Never thinking that I would be back here in front of you to give a report on how that prayer's been answered. But I'm here to do that. But I feel compelled to just tell you a little bit about myself for the benefit of you who don't know me and for the listening and viewing audience that don't know me. I'm born in Connorsville. My sweet mother was from Bunker Hill, west of town. My father, a native of Utah and a World War II veteran, by the name of Bob Parker, are my parents. And I have one younger sister, Pat Parker Everidge. And I want to let you know that my parents did everything in their power to make me a good boy and to teach me right from wrong. And I feel like they did a pretty good job. They're both passed away. My mother passed away in two thousand twelve, my father in nineteen ninety-four. And I'm gonna skip some of this stuff in the interest of time. I will tell you that in nineteen sixty-eight, I married the prettiest girl in Everton, Indiana. Very talented and lovely girl, my high school sweetheart and the love of my life, Marsha Simpson. And we've had four beautiful children. They're all grown up and we have nine beautiful grandchildren. And we have two, we have one great grandson who's two years old and one scheduled to be born about this time next month. Went to college in Idaho. When we came back from Idaho, I, we landed here just about the time the custom van business started, this big craze. I got involved in that and worked with that real hard for about fifteen years and was very successful at that. Did a little short stint for H.H. Robertson as a consultant and was very successful at that. I next went to work for Hillbrand Industries in Batesville, Indiana, in their marketing department for twenty-two years. And I rose up through the ranks at Batesville Casket and had a great deal of success there. In fact, in all three of these businesses, I had great success, three very different businesses. And I've been very blessed and I'm very thankful for the God-given talents that I have and for the education that has propelled my career up to this point. Now, what about that answer to the prayer that I spoke of at the very beginning? Have blessings of prosperity been realized? Have the windows of heaven been opened? I think they have. That was nineteen months ago. And not through any of my efforts, but in the past nineteen months, there's been a Wazetta, a Tractor Supply, a Label Shopper, Goodwill, Dollar Tree, and Hardee's that have opened or shortly will open. Four major employers have grown significantly. One employer who considered leaving town has decided to stay, which I think is pretty darn good. I'm happy to report that there's a very successful businessman who is starting a very unique business here in our community. We're gonna have a very nice welcome and a groundbreaking ceremony for him this coming Wednesday. I want to make it clear to everyone here that that groundbreaking will occur, not because of any great thing I've done, but really the credit goes to the mayor, Dr. Hodges, and the Economic Development Board who have worked on this. There's a lot of projects that were in process when I came on board and this was one of them. So I get no credit for this, other than the fact that I just happened to be here when all these good things are happening. I would like to express a little appreciation to Dr. Hodges, Barton Barker, the mayor, Melissa Matney, and the other members of the EDG Board who have helped me along with city and county council members to get me acclimated and get me on board. I appreciate it very much. They've taken a lot of their time in visiting me face to face and also with phone calls. I appreciate it. I also want to mention the efforts of Brenda Todd, my administrative assistant. She's great. She's been very helpful during my first few weeks. I've had the privilege of being behind the desk now for, going on six weeks, and I've had my eyes open as to how things work to bring business to Connorsville. I would bet a paycheck that the people in Connorsville really don't know how this thing works. I didn't. I didn't know anything about professional site selectors or state site selectors. I didn't know anything about professional, or excuse me, regional economic development groups, multi-county groups that are very necessary to get federal dollars. I didn't know anything about that. Economic development is the oil that lubricates the wheels of progress and it's so important that we have it. I've also had the opportunity to visit with other economic development directors in the surrounding counties. I've been to some of their offices. They're well-funded. They're well-organized. They're our competitors. They want those businesses that we want. It is so important that we support economic development now and in the future. And you'll be seeing probably more of me than you want to as we go forward. I'm, I love Connorsville. I think there's some bright days ahead, that there's great prosperity around the corner for us. We talk about the businesses that have left town and I've lived here all my life, so I know what those businesses are and you do too. I believe that we can replace a lot of those businesses if we act and if we work hard, if we put our best foot forward and we have been doing that. And I appreciate the mayor, your influence and help in bringing and showing me how to entertain some of these companies that have come to take a look at Connorsville. It's not unlike the work that I did with Hillenbrand, entertaining funeral directors who came to Facebook. So I'm very well versed with that. Is there any questions before I sit down?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. The first group we had come to town after Dan, I'd only been here three, four days or a week at the most, and I kind of took the lead and we entertained and we worked together side by side. Then we came up with this thing we're gonna have Wednesday and they came to my office and said, how you wanna handle this? And I said, I'm turning the reins over to you, Dan. This is your baby. Today, I think it was, or yesterday, I got an email with it all planned out. Do you know how much nicer that is for the mayor? I don't have to worry about that anymore. He's there and he planned that thing out. He knows what time this is all gonna take place and I'm just standing back and watching him orchestrate it. I know he's been talking with our local businesses. He's been talking with everybody he can talk to, trying to talk him into doing something here or expanding. I know he has some ideas about getting himself educated. I believe you're gonna go with the Ball State program.
Yes.
That was one of the first things I did when I got elected. I went to the Ball State and I think it's a great program. And when he talks about regional, I think we're in the planning to get a regional thing going with other counties.
Right.
He's, for a guy that came in that was in charge of decorating, or I shouldn't say decorating, but designing caskets, he's done a great job to, and the windows of heaven are opening.
They are.
Just, they're opening slowly. But I appreciate the.
Which brings us to another important issue. All the people of Connorsville, along with this council, I ask you to pray for those windows to continue to open, if you do it. I'm sure they will.
Any questions to the Economic Development Director?
The thing opened on Wednesday. Can you say what it is, the groundbreaking? Is it the people I talked to, Mr. Mayor? The people I talked to?
I'll refer that to the.
You're gonna refer that to me? It's a kind of an agribusiness type thing.
Yeah, he has, he has met with him.
We're trying to keep it under wraps for the sake of the media so that we have a little more intrigue. This is not one of those things that's gonna be life or death if someone finds out.
Is he relocating or is he gonna be around the?
He's talking about.
Is he gonna be around the?
I really found out today, I think it's a done deal.
Well, that's great.
I think.
Very successful.
Not absolutely sure.
I'll be getting with you this summer to sit down with him and talk to him about some things.
Actually.
We got a plan, I think.
Could you give us an idea of how many people might be involved in?
We're talking about, up to about a hundred, as I recall, when he's fully functional on his running. And that will be, how long? How long will it take to get him? I'm not sure. I know, I did talk to a person today, some of the bids have already went out to start the construction and so, probably pretty quick. So a hundred right off the bat?
No, no, it's gonna grow.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Questions?
Been in the works for a while, hasn't it, Dan?
Yes, it has.
He's been here several times.
Great guy.
Selected Connersville because we have what he needs here in Connersville.
We get more of him like that here, we'll just multiply it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Dan, you don't have to stay for the rest of this agony unless you just want to. Go home to that lovely wife. EMS commander.
For the month of March, our expenses for, for the city share was forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and twenty-five cents. Our receipt was fourteen thousand, two thirty-three fifty-one, and in a total of twenty-seven thousand, seven oh six seventy-four. And we've made two hundred and three runs for the year, and six hundred and twenty-one for the, for the year, two hundred and three for the month. Any questions?
That ambulance still running?
So far.
Like Roland dies every time, right?
It, it's starting to have a little bit of a hiccup.
You notice his overtime for the month of March is five hundred and four dollars. Is that F L S A?
No, this was March, remember?
Oh, this was March, just before we implemented.
We had a couple of weeks before.
You, you don't have to come yet, Mike. We're gonna take care of some business here. Along with the first aid unit, the billing company that bills for us, now been billing for us three years? Two, three years? How many, four years? No way, as time gone fast. Have recommended to me that I come to you and ask to adjust the rates because the insurance companies are allowing more money for an ambulance trip than what we're charging in all areas. So, I've prepared a little information here for you. And I want each one of you to, I didn't get this in your packet because I didn't have it in time. But I want you to, I want you to review this and be prepared at the next council meeting to
Thank you.
To consider it. This would, this would increase our income and cut our, increase our income. We'll never make a profit, but we would cut our expense. And this would affect about thirty percent of our people, the people with insurance. I know when you look at this and we're raising these rates, it worries you. But this billing service, we think is an excellent billing service. I can't, because of the HIPAA rules, I can't say what I'd like to say at this meeting. But I can say, they've always guided us right, and they think that we should change our fees to this. Now, you take these home with you. Call me. Call Dale if you have questions. Call Julie. And if you...
Can you tell us what the difference is offhand, what the percentage of increase or something?
Dale, Dale, let's run through those. The mileage is up, would be up.
Four dollars.
Four dollars.
So, it's eight now?
It's twelve now.
Oh, okay.
They, they request a rate to sixteen.
Oh, okay. So, these are the present, are these the present rates?
Yes. This is in county, that's the page you're looking at is in county and out of county.
Right.
And then your second page back is what they're writing.
Okay, the new ones here, okay, I see.
If you compare the numbers, you, you can easily, you still want it to order, you just wanna compare them?
No, that's fine. I didn't realize that it's here.
I do have a question. Would it be, there's a significant difference between in-county and out-of-county. On all these, on the, the third page here, do these rates, are these in-county or are they out-of-county rates?
These would be the in-county rate.
And then the out-of-county would add additional, what, two fifty or something like that it looks like?
Remember, this is tax-supported by Fayette County Reddies.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, we naturally charge more when we have to go out of county. We don't go out of county very often, only mostly to Franklin County and Rush County when we help somebody else. But I just want you to look this all over. If you don't wanna go anyplace with this, it's fine. But it's a way of cutting costs.
I, I would like to say that they have specialty care listed here and specialty care transport. We don't do that. That's hospital to hospital inter-transports, and we don't do that.
What's the ambulance mileage? What does that mean? Fifteen dollars per mile?
If we load you up at your house, from your house to the hospital, whatever that mileage is, you're billed sixteen dollars per mile.
Per mile?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one here that says BSL air care.
Right. That's if we call for helicopter and we, they meet us on scene, and we don't transport you, that's what we can bill. If we transport you, say, from your house to the airport, then we can only bill the BLS transport cost.
Is, are there, are there requests on the addition, additional to the air care? So, I didn't see one on the second, on that second page here.
Sad I can't interest this time. I missed that one.
In healthcare, it's highly unusual that an insurance company accepts more or, you know, allows more. So, this is great. Wonderful.
We gotta figure that it would affect about thirty percent of our people. And it will not affect the people that are in dire need and don't have the money. It will not affect them. But it, it's kinda not good business for us not to charge what insurance companies are willing to pay. After all, that's why you're buying your insurance.
All your supplies have gone out. I mean, everything's gone out, so usually you just have to eat that.
You know when last time you raised rates?
Been roughly nine years ago, probably.
Has it been that long?
I think so, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think I was mayor. I think I was on the council when we changed your rates.
Yeah, I was on the committee. And it's been a while, yes. I agree with Dale. It's been a long time since you met and had a rate adjustment.
I'd like to point out their overtime. It's unbelievable. It was in January, seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars and two cents. In February, two thousand, five hundred and twelve sixty-two. But in March, it was only five hundred and four dollars. That's great.
Should be zero in the next month.
Beg pardon?
Should be zero next month.
You got a little F L S A. Do you have any?
Don't believe so.
I don't know. I've threw them off yet.
Alright, thank you, Dale. Park department.
Month to report for March, improved revenues of seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. Year-to-date, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven. Attached is our expenditure for the month. Biggest expenditures, wells and gildens. A lot of that is materials from the restaurants down at the Roberts Building, the remodel we did over the winter, and a little bit of Bay Bruce bills. But a lot of that's coming next, next month. Activities, programming. Restroom shelters are now all open. We just had our Easter egg hunt, another great turnout. Had a beautiful day. You know, three hundred-plus people again. Couple athletic things. We are hosting a free softball clinic. The girls' head coach at the high school and his staff will be instructing the kids on April twenty-seventh. Girls' and boys' T-ball and girls' softball, all those signups are now done. Teams are picked, starting practice. Now, we're taking co-ed church league softball, deadline may fifth. Also, summer discovery, we're picking off pretty much this week, grades first through sixth. Any information, you can call the park office on summer discovery program. The last thing, the Bay Bruce cleanup is just about done. We spent about five thousand dollars to this point, getting, including payroll, getting to this point. I think Bay Bruce spent or lost another forty-five hundred during that. And so, we still got some electrical work to do. The girls' softball concession stand, we pretty much had to rewire the whole thing. But we're getting to it and we should be ready for opening day. Any questions?
Opening day is?
May eighth tenth, I believe.
Well, I come in, Mike, and, and his workers for all the work they did in the basement at Roberts Building. I was given the tour and I was quite impressed with the before and after, so.
That's another thing. One of his men serves as our maintenance man and fixes anything we want fixed anyplace. Without that man, we'd be spinning out. You would not believe it.
He's done all this electrical work down at the pool field. If not, we'd be in trouble.
Well, he's done the pool, too, where the pipes froze. You know, we had such a bad winter, we lost some pipes. They've replaced all that. They got the pool about ready to go.
We haven't fixed that yet.
I thought you did.
We've been at Bay Bruce for a month.
Man, maybe back, too.
Yeah, so, that's on the...
We don't have to hire any of that done. We do it all in-house.
Yeah, that's great.
And I don't wanna shortchange the other guys. The other guys work side by side with him. I mean, I've seen him up there in cover holes when it's darn near zero, working on a roof on a building.
Yeah, they work in a field together, so.
Yeah. They're all to be commended because they, and let me tell you something else they did. When we had this shortage of money, we were renting clothes, pants for them to wear. And we took away their clothing allowance. That's the stuff they buy, their gloves and their coats, their work boots and everything. They said, "Hey, we'll go one step further." They said, "We'll wear our own clothes to work." We bought them t-shirts with the little parkland.
Yeah, great t-shirts.
And, and they're wearing their own clothes, eliminating about two hundred bucks a month, just renting clothes. That's the kinda people you got up there. They stepped up the plate, said, "Hey, we'll help this way. We'll do some more." But, you know, you really appreciate it when you got people like that.
And the Roberts Building is beginning to pay off.
Yeah, I think Leonard mentioned it earlier.
Thirteen weeks, I guess.
Yeah, it's a pre-visiting.
At seven hundred and forty dollars in March.
It's starting to pick up. More people saying that and...
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police. Chief.
Good evening. We've had nine hundred and forty-nine law reports, forty-one citations issued, two ordinance violations, sixty-three warnings issued, three personal injury accidents, thirty-three property damage accidents, zero fatalities, and sixty-six arrests. And my overtime, of course, just started about a month ago. And so, you could probably just imagine being half the month with three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. If you compare it with the last two months, or go down here and compare it to the last five years, we came down and probably next month, well, probably it'll be easier on next month. We're not paying overtime, so.
What are your contractual services? I know in the last two months, you spent considerable money on those.
I'd have, I don't know what they are.
It's the rent, renting of the mats back there. It's...
That could be, that'd be a lot of...
Well, sometimes if they have any car repairs, any...
Yeah, it could come out of that. It could be anything. Fran, I'd have to go check and see, I don't...
Anything where we pay somebody else to do it.
Okay, and Julie, why is the purr going up and down like it is? One month it's six hundred and forty, the next month two hundred and seventy-nine, now it's back to six thirty-three.
What are you talking about?
That doesn't make any sense.
I'm sorry?
That doesn't make any sense. I don't know.
No, it doesn't make sense to me.
Which one is it?
It's, it's for Jackie's purr.
Oh, purr?
The February was down to two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. January was six hundred and forty, and March is six hundred and thirty-three.
I'm not sure that's right, Fran.
Pardon?
I'm not sure that's right. It doesn't make any sense.
Probably not.
Do we have three paydays in one of them months? Would that make a difference?
Well, we haven't had it in two months.
Okay. I'll check it.
I can look at it. I'll find out.
Total amount, two hundred, one thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars for your March expenses, Dave.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
I will say again, for the police department, we have eliminated two part-time individuals that were working. We've eliminated them completely, and David and Dennis have picked up their jobs. I, I don't know what dollar amount it cuts out, but it cuts out quite a bit. Street department. David?
You see on there that there's some overtime? Yeah, it's for the last of March. There was the snow on Sunday. If y'all remember, the last snow we had, it was significant. We were out, some of them were out seven hours, some of them were out nine hours that day. So, that's why they overtime. So, there won't be more overtime with all the snows again, I suppose.
Till next week.
No, you'll have some overtime.
Yeah, but for the trash pickup and stuff, but for any kind of, anything significant at all, it'll just be for the trash pickup. Friday, we did it and already did it in six and a half hours and decided he wanted to go home, so we did it in six and a half hours. So, that's something that happens and not, didn't have to, and that's what he decided he would like to do, so that's what we did.
You notice your gallons used on the back end, yeah?
I don't know if that, this is the first time, so let's do this as a comparison next month.
They've come down significantly.
If you, you know, some, because miles didn't mean much to me, I thought I would try to use the gallons. That would mean more to me than, and Julie has the answer to, to a lot of this question about how much did we pay for that gallon? But I just thought gallons would be a nice thing to, to gauge the vehicles by other than mileage because we don't have any, any vehicles that get mileage worth a hoot, so I just thought I would try this mileage, mileage thing and see what you guys thought of that from month to month.
I want to.
We'll see how, how that works.
Okay, it was a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents to operate your department in March.
I didn't really look to see what it was a month before, so I know it's last because I've...
Maybe it's not the same, I think.
And all we're trying to patch for those ones that keep hitting the holes, so we keep patching every day.
Okay, utilities altogether report, we started the month in water with eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. And the ending balance was nine hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-fourty-seven. Actually, in sewer, we started the month with four hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents, and we ended with four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven ninety-seven. And in stormwater, we begin the month with one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-four cents. And we ended the month with one million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents. The utilities are solvent and operating. And I have talked with Mr. Seber, with Umbel and Associates, and he has sent us a letter, in the process sent us a letter. He doesn't feel like we have to have any rate study or consider a rate increase this year. We're able to keep that afloat. And remember, we are using two hours a day, each day overtime, which we allowed from the utility because we're putting the meters in. And as of today, we have just about a little over half the meters installed. Brad, I don't know, do you know, is it, is it thirty-four hundred we got installed? Do you know what that number is? About?
I think it's more than that, isn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't it like four thousand, about?
Depends whether you're talking about the retros.
All together, how many we got, we can read at?
A good thirty-five hundred.
About thirty-five hundred, which means one man can read those. Our goal is to have the rest of those in by the end of this year. David, now he told us today he hopes to have it done by August. I think that's a little ambitious with vacations and all the repair that we gotta do this summer. But the utilities are solvent and we're, we're running okay, okay? We've cut some tremendous expense over there. We have an assistant director almost to be here pretty soon.
In August.
In August, he'll be here. The office manager is retiring over there. Julie's been over there. The girls are gonna take up the slack and Julie thinks they can run that. We're gonna eliminate that cost. We're just, we're cutting every place we can cut. Even though we're running in the black pretty decent over there, we don't want anything to happen that keeps us, so.
Dave's retiring soon, right?
Dave's retiring twentieth of June. Okay.
So, we won't need a water rate, according to John Seber?
No, John Seber says we don't need it.
And this is a yearly study, but?
We have to do it every May because our ordinance demands it.
Yes.
So, he wrote us a letter. We'll put it in the file. We can skip this year.
That's good.
Tom Creach, would you please give your report? You got that in front of you? Three hundred and fifty-eight tons. What I was interested in is the recycling forty-two tons, and I don't know how that compares to?
Oh, it stays about the same, forty-two, forty-three.
Even with charging for the bags?
Yes, I wish.
Well, we've only been charging for bags for two weeks.
I hope recycling picks up because that would reduce our trash to the landfill. Folks would recycle and...
I'd like to, I'll refer man, Tom, the next time I see him, because he had two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents in overtime.
Oh, that has to end.
Fire department.
Started out with eighty-eight runs for the month. Had a hundred and thirty-five and a half hours in emergencies, thirty-six inspections, eight investigations, five pre-planned tours, fifty-two hours of training, total losses estimated at about forty-one thousand, five hundred. Overtime broke down... Overtime broke down like this before 3/11, which was the day we declared emergency, we had $840.36. We had, after that, we had $476.96 on a fire out on Memorial Drive. $709.38 in FLSA for a total of $2,026.70.
Hey, operating your department, Troy, was $186,423.74, which is about as low as I've seen in a long time. Congratulations.
Any other question?
Airport.
Airport, excuse me, airport, Channel 3, 6, 7. Dean, I saw you there all evening and almost forgot you.
I'm just being real quiet listening.
You're looking at...
Mr. Mayor, Julie, ladies and gentlemen, the common council, Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker's gonna make me a partner in his firm, I understand, we spend so much time together.
You're welcome.
Indiana Code 8-22-2-4, Section 4, says that at least once a year, some member of the board must make a report to city council, but it's preferably is done in February. Well, in February, I had my biannual bout with pneumonia. In March, my 392-foot-long hill was like an ice ski slope, and I made an appointment or tried to get on the agenda for the last of March, and it didn't happen. So here I am tonight, a couple months late, that's not a felony. We are doing great at the airport. We had great plans last year, if you recall, of the new terminal building, and it, like everything else, the cost just kept escalating. And we felt like we could chain our $150,000 annual grants together and get this thing paid for. And then I found out that the administration was withdrawing funds from the FAA Airport Improvement Fund to spend on other things. And when the federal government starts spending money out of the FAA Airport Improvement Fund, which comes from our gasoline taxes, our registration fees, and other things like that, it starts to become frightening. And we thought, wow, we've got two grants setting up there now, $250,000 grants. And we were concerned that we might find ourselves out on a limb and sawing it off in back of us. So we downsized, and we took, with the blessing of the FAA, they were very, very pleased that we chose to do this. So we're gonna renovate our old building, and we're gonna completely renovate it. We're going to put in new windows, we're going to enclose it in an insulated shell, we're going to put a sloped roof on it with slopes out on the porch in front and back. It's gonna be rewired, it's going to have, everything is gonna be green, so as to cut down on our heat and cooling. We, during the winter months with those old plate glass windows, we heat the whole north end of town, almost into Wayne County. Same way with cooling, we do that too. So that's where we stand on that. Second thing, does anybody have any questions, incidentally, about what we do and how we've been doing last year, where we are? Okay. Second thing is, I've been hearing some rumblings, what's wrong with the airport board? If I can answer that real quick, nothing. These are all stuff that's coming back, people asking, where does the money go? Well, the money goes to the airport. I mean, that's our grants, our state and federal grants. They can't be spent on the city of Connersville. It doesn't make any difference if everybody in town's out of a job, and the Federal Aviation Administration sees fit to grant us $2 million, that's where it's gonna be spent, at the airport. Not likely that's gonna happen, but that's the way the rules are written. And that's explained in Indiana Code 8-22-2-4, Section 4. Money received by the Board of Aviation Commissioners shall be paid into the treasury and credited to the Department of Aviation. That's all funds. Goes on down here, airport grant money is federal and state money and can only be used for airport improvement. We are oftentimes accused of being, no, you can't do that, no, you can't do this. And all we are is a messenger. And it really gets worrisome to me, and I would say this to everybody in TV land, if you got a question, call me. Don't bother the mayor or Julie, call me, and I'll explain it. The funds that we get, and the way we get them, is a long drawn-out process. This is 5091-6B. It says, "Any property described as part of an airport in an agreement with the United States or defined by an airport layout plan is considered to be dedicated or obligated for the airport." Plain and simple. We received a lot of flack because we didn't roll over and tell everybody, yes, you can build a walkway across the runway safety zone approach to 36 for Walmart. We can't do it. I called the FAA, absolutely not, no way. So what we do, we're just messengers, we're the in-between guys from the federal government and the state government, the Indiana codes, the grant requests, which is each one, this is what comes with a grant, when you get a grant, each one of these, and it has to be adhered to. And like in Chapter 2, 2-1 sponsors agreements, under the various federal grant programs, sponsor of a project agrees, that's us, to assume certain obligations pertaining to the operation, use, and maintenance of the airport. These obligations are embodied in the application of federal assistance as sponsors' assurances and become part of the grant offer and bind your recipient upon acceptance. We're tied to these grants. We can't let anybody use that property. Now, comes a question, the firm that wants to unload turbines. We're having a terrible time with that, as John will tell you. Making me crazy. We've had conference call after conference call with the FAA, and every time we do, there's something else crops up. There are eight different agencies in the FAA that look over land like this, and all we're gonna do is lease it for eight months. It'll then return to the airport. This has turned into a nightmare, it's getting worse, and it's a matter of jumping through one hoop, and then they come up with another hoop, and you just keep jumping. But we keep trying, and we're not giving up on anything, and we work as hard as any agency in Connersville to bring business to Connersville. I personally write 10 to 12 letters a year on my own stationery, on my own stamps, looking through agency reports of maybe an air, a manufacturing firm that manufactures something about aviation is looking for a spot. I write to them, come to Connersville, here's what we got. I asked for Becky Stillman's help one time here recently when Honda was looking for a place to build their jet. Three weeks later, I got a particle, I got a letter from the Department of Agriculture, she had forwarded my letter to the Department of Agriculture. So I just forgot about it, Honda went to North Carolina. But we try, and it gets very disheartening when someone says we're not trying, or that all we say is no. When we say no, it's because the federal government, the state government says you can't do this, and that means no. We try to say it the best way possible, but sometimes it's misunderstood. And I would say to anybody watching TV, or at home, or wherever they are, if you want to go over these codes and regulations with me, I would be happy to do that in the mayor's conference room anytime, and that goes for anybody here. Anytime you want to, call me, and we'll sit down and we'll go over all of this stuff, all of this. And I'll show you how we operate and what we operate under, and why sometimes it seems like we may not be cooperating, but we're doing our level best. We just can't buck the federal government, we'll lose our grants. And that's, that's how it stands. Anybody have any questions? Somebody, anybody?
Will you have your renovation done on your...
We are going to start pretty quick. What we've done, we've had that building designed so that eventually, if the money, if we get back, if the economy picks up and we start having grants again toward those buildings, our $150,000 annual grant, then the building is set up so that we can attach a large timber frame lobby to it, to really make it attractive.
Good.
We're gonna have a nice building anyway when we get done, but we're designing that with that thought in mind.
That's good.
Anybody? Thank you very much for your attention.
John Paulsy, Cable 3 TV. Should you put it on autopilot?
Program at the March did 12 hours, 22 minutes of meeting production, nine hours, 59 minutes of original production. And one of the things we did was, of course, the State House access, went up to the State House interview, gone to a representative there. Fran always does a good job of getting the information out of them. And that was a pretty good show, actually, if you had a chance to watch that. The Garden Doctor is back on the air, and our next show will be this coming Friday, I'm sorry, this coming Monday at 7:00 PM live on Channel 3. So if you have questions for the Garden Doctor, now's the time to get ready to ask that. We've also started a new show called Homegrown Health, and that stars the Garden Doctor's son and his wife, Chris and Jen Matthews. They're specialists in healthy living. And the last show, we produced it, it'll start next week, and they had some very interesting information, I was surprised. It does very good stuff, so. That'll air weekdays, Monday through Friday, 5:30 PM, so tune in and check that out. Any questions?
We enjoy your, Walt, and we enjoy your other stuff you put on there. And you've got a real gem here. Fran moved from radio into TV. He's kinda like George Burns, you couldn't even tell him.
He does a great job.
He does a great job. I envy him to be able to speak like he does on any subject in such a short moment.
We're gonna, we're gonna have him out there doing baseball here for a while.
I hear, and I, are you, have you decided what you're doing on the downhill derby? Are you gonna try to do it?
Oh, the derby is scheduled, June 18th through the 22nd.
I suggest you give him an air condition.
Yeah, we're gonna do something different this year. I've already dedicated myself to production instead of being at the top of the hill this year, so we'll be able to get it done.
He's about melting down there.
Yeah, it was very, very hot last year. But he did a great job, that was, that was an exceptionally warm day.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Old business. Anybody have any old business? We got anything that's old, that's pending, we got it covered? Miscellaneous business. Nancy, you have anything miscellaneous you want to bring up tonight? Nothing? Dave?
I do. The CHS plant sale is May 2nd and 3rd. It'll start at four, well, four o'clock and run until 6:30 on Friday, and then...
May 2nd?
Yep. You want to come May 2nd?
Is that the right day now?
Yeah, is that Friday?
It starts at four o'clock, so you gotta be out there at two.
Something like that, yeah.
Now, I'm gonna put those flowers in these, these things out here in front, they'll lay there good in these, in these thing, window box boxes.
They have to be more specific, which flowers?
You know, the ones I got all across the front of this building.
Yeah, but what, what flowers?
Geraniums of the trees.
No, I don't want to do geraniums. I was gonna think about doing those sperm jobs.
Um, if you got enough of them, probably. I don't, I don't know, they, they kinda bush out.
Do they take a lot of water?
Yeah.
We water them every day.
I'm not so sure.
We have a good water supply here.
I have to look at it a little bit. They may not have enough.
I was doing that to cut costs, and geraniums are so expensive and the link of mine...
It's 'cause you gotta get it from me.
I get it from you, but man, I gotta stand in line, nobody helps me. All right, maybe in a second, don't come.
I don't get it, it's okay.
Miscellaneous, Fran?
No, actually.
Dr. Webber?
No.
Connie?
No.
No, that's easy. Public forum, we don't have hardly any public left. Anybody under public forum? No? Unless you have something, I had the privilege of having lunch with Andy from Wayzetta. I've been through the plant several times here in the last month. Things are going real good up there, and I think I have the ability to say they're making about 250 to 300 cabinets a day.
Wow.
They have three lines going, I think they want to have nine or eight or nine lines going. If you want to buy their cabinets, they're on the internet, they're certainly well-made. They're all, the drawers are everything dovetail, the size of the cabinets are plywood, they're really quality cabinets, when you look at the hinges, the handles. He has big plans. He had four or five things he wanted me to work on, I got with our economic development director, and we're working on those things to make things smoother for him here in Connersville. We've been working with Ivy Tech on some issues, and we want to be sure that we keep them here, that we don't lose them, so we want to stay close to them, keep working with Some of the things we've been working on, we're working with one of our major companies about possibly expansion. We met with this company that Dan referred to three weeks, two weeks ago, and they have not chose a site yet. We thought we were a little lax in one area, and we found out that there were three areas we were a little short in, but all other areas, we outshined everybody. When you look around the community and you see that the moose is out of business, had an auction, some of the churches are in trouble, the Elks has been sold, the Country Club's been sold and privatized. We're lucky that we've been able to hang on as long as we have, and I don't want to paint a gloomy picture, because as Dan says, we are coming back, we're diversifying, we're going with a growing company, we're going with wood cabinets, we're not in automotive products, although we still have some good automotive product companies here. But it's, it's tough to buck the waves, but we are, we're coming back gradually, and I think we gotta hold our heads up. When you get people like the man that we're gonna do business with on Wednesday, we break ground, he personally wants to move his wife and two children here, and I think he's in the process of doing that. Just keep working, and as Dan says, keep praying. Julie, did you have anything that you wanted to talk about tonight?
No.
You're just happy with everything?
Well, we think we're getting by.
All right. Nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
It's on, man.
We got a motion to adjourn on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.